Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Happy New Year to everyone. My name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the chairman of the planning board. And let me start out by introducing the other members. Down to the left and at the end of the table is Von Dugan. Next to Von, Peter Goodwin. Mike Hutter is the vice chairman of the planning board. To my right is John Thurston. And next to him is Brad Harriman, who is the representative from the board of selectmen. And our alternate, Julie Jacobs. Julie, do you mind sitting in for Susan Replier today?
I don't mind. I will.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Okay, we have several public hearings. And the first two, what will happen is the applicant makes a brief presentation. During that presentation, the planning board members can ask questions. And they ultimately determine if the application is complete or not. If that, if it is complete, a motion is made to accept this application as complete, and I can open the public hearing so any members of the public can speak to the issue. At the close of the public session, the board will then usually deliberate on an issue. So, the first item on the agenda is James and Beth Sherman, 83 Center Street, tax map 102-8, case 22022-10, site plan review. This is for a 12-site expansion of a campground. The applicant has been to the ZBA for a special exception for the expansion of the campground. And actually, it's going to change from 48 existing sites to 66 camp sites. So, turn it over to you folks.
It's going to be 60.
Oh, 60.
Yeah, okay. I thought I said, sorry. Okay, all right.
What to say? We just would like to get a 12-site expansion, 5% increase. Yeah.
Okay, all right. And we did talk to the applicant at our last public hearing, where he went over all of the issues. And we advised you to ask for a waiver of some of the site plan regulations.
Yeah.
And you did that because you felt that it wasn't necessary for us to make a determination? Okay. Okay. Any board members have any questions?
Madam Chairman, the town did hire a new secretary for the planning board and zoning board. So if you could each, when you speak, state your name before speaking for a couple of rounds, so that she has a chance to learn your voices. It'd be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Michael Hutter. The number of waivers is a little bit longer than we're usually used to seeing, as you stated in your statement. But I have no difficulties with any of them. So when you're ready, Madam Chairwoman, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the waivers as requested.
Okay, and any other questions? Tavis, do you have anything you want to add?
Not at this time. I do have some recommended conditions if the board gets to that point. But I have no problem with the waivers being submitted.
Okay, then entertain a motion to accept this application as complete.
Can we get a motion for the, accept the waivers first?
Yes, that's right. Yes.
Beg pardon. I'll be happy to move that the board accept the application for waivers as presented in the application. And I'm not going to go through each one of them individually, because it's a fairly lengthy list, but simply state in the motion as requested. And this is Michael Hutter speaking, sorry.
Okay, I'll second that motion, Kathy Barnard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, so I can now open the public hearing on this item. If anyone wants to speak to this issue, now would be the time to do that. Okay. I don't see anyone coming forward. Tavis, do you have a list of conditions for us to consider?
Fairly short list of conditions here. Basically states, number one, the following plans is amended in the date of this approval or incorporated into the approval. And because there were not plans, it was part of the waiver. It's listed here as materials as received on December 14th, 2021. The second is the applicant responsible for payment of all recording fees for the notice of decision. And then third, as with every application, the most stringent information in the entire package she'll carry. That's all I have.
Okay, all right. And, okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, we now have to accept the application as complete. Sorry about that.
Mike Hutter, so moved.
And I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing has been opened. Nobody came forward. And I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve this application.
So moved. Michael Hutter.
John Thurston, seconded.
Okay. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, the next application, Taylor Community, Vista Drive, 83 Rolling Wood Drive. This is tax map 145-22, case 2022-02. This is for a site plan review of a two-story addition to the maintenance facility and a new salt shed. And if the applicant could just comment, apparently, the maintenance building was approved in 2002. And at that time, or around that time, the salt shed, there was an existing salt shed. Could you please sort of tell me where that salt shed was? And in addition to that, one of the conditions for the salt shed was a perimeter drain around the salt shed to prevent surface water from draining toward the salt and intercepting will be directed into existing drainage. Also, in addition, the planning board did approve the Sugar Hill development. I think it was in the late 90s. So, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Kirk Bezwick, vice president of facilities management for Taylor Community. I have with me tonight John Kenny, the principal civil engineer for this project with DuBois and King. He will explain the actual site development plans that we have before you today. And also, just to be transparent, I did send along our winter operations and salt management plan for Sugar Hill for your review. I think Tavis just passed it out to you a moment ago. To my knowledge, I've been with Taylor for seven years. We just recently bought Sugar Hill. My understanding is that the property was built in 1997. I believe that you just stated that the salt shed was approved in 2000-ish. There is currently both an existing maintenance facility that was approved and built, as well as an existing salt shed on the site, around the corner and up the hill from the maintenance shop. That particular facility only holds salt. It's not built or equipped to handle sand and salt. It's pitched backwards so that the, any of the material in that salt bin don't leach out. But it wasn't really built to our standards, and it doesn't have room for sand and salt, and it's not built on impervious surface, as far as I can tell. Looks like they made an attempt at asphalt, and the asphalt's pretty broken up by now. It's not really on a foundation. Doesn't really serve our purposes, Taylor's purposes at this time. So we fully intend and what's, place it, and what's in front of you, basically are the plans to replace it. So essentially, tonight, Taylor's asking for two things. Both already are in existence. One is an extension of the current maintenance shop. The Sugar Hill operation that Taylor purchased this February currently has a staff of four maintenance operations people and a housekeeper. They work out of a room pretty much no bigger than a large closet. That garage currently that exists there has electricity only, heated, and it fits two vehicles, but it doesn't fit all of the maintenance operations vehicles that Sugar Hill and Taylor combined will need for operation. But we intend to add to the back of that building, building approximately the same size as the current maintenance shop. And we will be bringing in water to that and building a bathroom for the staff. And provide sink and toiletries there as an office for the staff to use there. And by doubling the size, it'll serve a couple of purposes. One, will give John and his staff room to actually have all their stuff undercover. It will also provide room for Taylor Community, who operates the Back Bay campus, along with the new amenities building and the future healthcare building that we've already discussed past meetings. A place for us to operate also. The second is the salt shed, which is a replacement of the current salt shed that is housed up the hill behind the maintenance shop. It will be increased in size. Our engineers have designed it so it will be an impervious surface. It will have a full foundation under it. And it'll allow us to actually hold more material and push and grab the material without having to worry about knocking over the building, which is currently what's happening in Sugar Hill. Once we got to the point where we identified those needs, we worked with an architect, Stewart Associates, who was unable to be here tonight. But once we got the basic foundation size, the building structure, the two-story layout, we reached out to DuBois and King, who took some site shots, started working with us to develop basically what amounts to is a stormwater management program and a civil design to control the runoff. What we've, I'm going to show you where we're talking about. This is the Sugar House at the top of the hill. Down on 109A down here. All the way to the top is the big Sugar House, and the maintenance shop is at the dead-end road. We're expanding that by 100%, and the salt shed is right here, right behind it. We're anticipating recreating this area here and putting the salt shed closer to the maintenance shop. So loading, sanders, and that type of operation will be much more convenient. Any questions so far?
You had requested a waiver of the architectural design?
Yes. Basically, we have because we haven't finished all the construction documents. We want to make sure that the site plan was approved. That way, we could finish and start getting estimates based on the approved site plan, as well as finishing construction documents. We've got rudimentary drawings that you've seen. Once we get approvals here, then we will complete those. We can submit at a later time the architectural information that you.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Peter.
Yes, sir.
So the present, the present salt area shed, or whatever, is now being upgraded to a better version?
Yes, sir.
That seems to be what you're saying, and therefore, it's a, it's better for the environment?
I'd be happy to tour any of the planning board members up there to show you. It's, over the years, it hasn't really been a lot of investment into the maintenance operations or the facility side of the Sugar Hill operation. I have to say, it's a wonderful campus. Very happy to have bought it. Now, over the next two years, we fully intend to expand the facilities operations so it mirrors what we do in Laconian campus, where we have over 130 cottages versus the 29 on this campus. What's there now is kind of hand-built, is very rickety. I think they've had to patch it to keep it in place. It's a wood frame structure that's sitting on the ground, so you really can't push the material in. Really, I don't believe it was really engineered. I think it was something that just met a need at the time. Because as you know, it is on a hill, so there is a lot of salt that's required to keep our staff and the residents able to get up and down the hill. But at this time, you know, we're expanding our operation there, we're adding staff. We want to make sure that that facility is maintained to our standards. So we intend to build a larger salts, a sand salt bin. Basically has, usually the sand is on the right-hand side and the salt's on the left. We use mostly salt, and the sand is really just emergency planning so that when you have a storm, the salt no longer works. It's either too cold, or the ice is growing at a fast rate, the sand allows for traction.
But what you're doing is you're trying to make a better ecological solution to this problem of the old salt shed, which was leaching salt into whatever.
Yeah, you know, we had this conversation with our structural engineer just this afternoon. He was asking me, well, how do you load salt? And it's interesting, because you know, if I pulled my sander, which I have in my truck now, and you know, we load with tractors, and you try loading sand or salt into a typical sander, you can't see where you're loading it. So what happens is you typically have a, you know, you get some over the sides, you get it in the bed of the truck, some goes over the other side, and you wind it with material on the ground. So over the years, in Laconia, what we've learned is that you want to be loading at a higher level than what your truck sits at. So we usually have two to four feet step up, where the loader is up here, and you have visibility into the sander, and you can see how much material is needed, and you can get it in there without making a mess. So we've designed sand salt operation to mirror that. And what the civil engineers and what John will explain is that we've built a retention wall, so that when you come out of the sand salt, the loading operation is at about a three to four-foot height over the sander, have that visibility. But yes, all of what we're trying to do here started with, we don't have enough room to operate the way we want to operate, right? So we need to expand the maintenance shop. Well then, you know what? You guys don't have an office, and you don't even have a bathroom, so let's bring water into this, and let's put a septic system in. Well, if we're going to do that, let's, let's build a sand salt operation so that as we expand this operation, make it viable and build down at Back Bay, we have a place to store that and make sure it's environmentally friendly. So this started with an idea, and this is how we do it. We build it out till we have it where we need it, and it meets our needs. Thank you. Sir.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple for you, Kirk. First off, could you speak to the concerns indicated by the Wolfborough PD signage showing the directions to the salt shed, as were expressed by Captain Mark during the TRC meeting?
To be honest, I had a hard time reading those notes, because I wasn't able to go to the TRC.
His handwriting's not the greatest, but I understand.
The handwriting was not great. So if you could explain what the question was again, I would be glad to answer it.
Sure, I'll be happy to read, I'll be happy to read to you what he says. Captain Mark, leave the signage for direction to salt shed is his concern.
Okay, yeah, I don't have any problem adding, we, we make our own signs. We have a sign-making machine. We'd be happy to put up some small markers with arrows to show where that is. And that would be for the purpose of the PD knowing where to find that.
Exactly.
Okay.
So that's, that's an undertaking you'd be happy to make?
I, I see no reason why we wouldn't do that. We would do that anyhow.
All right, very good. Very good. You also, the second question you gave to us this evening, a document titled "Winter Maintenance and Salt Minimization Plan," which is praiseworthy. I wish all applicants contemplating a salt shed of this sort were as forthcoming as you guys are. You mentioned in there the NHDES Storage and Management of Deicing Materials Bulletin, which is number DWGB 22-30 dated 2019, and your intention to follow those best management practices as far as possible. I'd just like you to acknowledge that for the record, that that is the intention of Sugar Hill Operation.
Absolutely. Yeah, Sugar Hill Operation is blessed to have had a facility manager that was there since 1997. His name is John Kessler. He's fully vested in not only in Sugar Hill, now that it's a Taylor resident property, but he's also a Wolfborough resident, and he's been around a long time. He's always been very judicious with his use of salt. In fact, he uses less than I would prefer he uses during storms. So what we did in Laconia is basically define how we're going to do this. We currently run, I think, seven sanders, plows, and we do all of this ourselves for basically our three camps. And we had to define what that meant. When do we start plowing? You know, do we wait till it's six inches, like contractors? Do we get out there soon as it snows? When do we salt? When is it appropriate to use sand and salt mixed? So that program was an amalgamation of different things, you know, trial by error, and also working with different regulatory agencies, knowing that sodium chloride is becoming an issue in drinking water. All of our properties are within reasonable proximity to bodies of water. For instance, our Laconia campus is literally yards, hundreds of yards away from Opichi. So, you know, we have to be considering of where is our stormwater going? And to be honest, DuBois and King, and before DuBois and King, they purchased Steve J. Smith and Sons, or excuse me, Associates, which was our civil engineering at the time, DuBois and King purchased them, and they did all of our site planning. And they helped us put together that particular plan directed towards Sugar Hill. But it's mirrored after what we do in Laconia.
Well, I can understand then that, that NHDES document that I referenced will kind of guide the operations of the salt shed up.
Yes, Mike, I pulled that right from our Laconia plan, and I copied it and put it in that package, because we, that will be part of our Sugar Hill plan as well.
And one last question, if I may, Madam Chairwoman. The, the building, the, that you're going to be building up there to replace what's currently there, the two-story operation, can that be seen from the Sugar Hill facility itself? Is it visible?
Actually, we looked at that. I think only, forgive me for not knowing which the wings are, from this. See a corner of it.
Is that?
Because it's attached to the existing building, it's right behind it.
That does go to the architectural design guidelines that we have as part of site plan review. And I understand you don't have design drawings to show us tonight, unless you do.
We have elevation drawings to show you how it would appear on the outside.
Do we have, we have any understanding of what materials are going to be used on the outside?
Absolutely. Yeah, I could speak to the materials. It's going to be wood frame, two-story. It'll have a center steel beam for hoisting engines and trolling different various heavy materials. But it'll match the white vinyl siding around the rest of the building, because it's an addition to the existing structure, which will be the same size, so it'll be a continuous exterior that's already there. It's basically a homeowner garage with a loft above. What we're asking for is approval to build same footprint, two-story, with a higher interior ceiling height to allow bigger equipment to go in with a full second story for offices and storage. This is a white vinyl clad shingle roof, and this will match. So this'll be the same material on the outside. It'll just wrap around like it was always there.
Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, John.
So, this is a question for Tavis to start off. How much can somebody store salt in the commercial light district? Is there an amount?
I'm not aware of any zoning regulation on the amount of salt or sand that somebody can store on their property in any zone.
We had a zone that was specifically noted. We tried to work out towards North Wolfborough that was specifically designated for contractors' yard and salt storage yards.
This is accessory used to the actual facility's operation, so it's grandfathered under the approvals for the property.
We, there are certain zones where contractors' yards and contractors' yard light are allowed with a special exception, often with site plan approval, but even those don't have a limit on how much salt.
Okay.
It just speaks to it being covered on an impervious surface.
Okay, so then I'll start with, how much larger is the salt storage area compared to what it is right now? Are you doubling it, or a quarter of the increase, or just trying to get a balance barometer here?
Sure, John. Basically, it's going to double in size only because we're adding sand salt to it. Salt side will be basically the same size. We intend to load that only with triaxals. This particular unit, once we build it, will be about two-thirds the size of the one that we have in Laconia, because we load that with full trailer dumps. Go through hundreds and hundreds of tons of that every year for our Laconia campus. So, so it'll double in size, but only because we want to, for, to be prudent, you know, store sand salt there for those ice storms, like we've had so many of them so far this year.
So the, the pan that you talk about, is it a legitimate barrier with walls that come up, so that it doesn't leak out the cold joint seam and going out the bottom of the building?
What we intend to build has a couple of different options, and that's what we were discussing with the structural engineer this morning. The way we show it on the drawings is an eight-foot-high, 12-inch concrete poured wall. All right, so that's structurally sound enough that even with a loader, you can push against it to scoop the sand and salt out. That goes down four feet to a full spread footing, right? So that's, that's basically a full foundation wall. That would have to be coated with some kind of rubber coating to keep the sodium chloride from eating that away. We intended with that particular design to put, you know, a three-inch layer of asphalt in there, which would seal up against, you know, the three walls of the concrete with the roof over, so that that isn't eaten away by the salt sitting on it, but would keep the material on that and not allow it to leach down further and get out of, you know, that enclosed area. Either way, whether we do that, or we potentially could do a very rugged monolithic slab and build up on that with, you know, some kind of structural concrete blocks with a roof over that, there's ways to maintain that so that that would not spall over time. At this point, though, we're showing and we're leaning towards just doing a full foundation wall to make sure it's rugged and, you know, stays there for a long time. Either way, the engineering design or criteria calls for a slight pitch to that floor, whether it's asphalt or concrete, to allow moisture not to pitch back into this thing. Because if you add water to the salt, it just turns it into a mess.
Okay, thank you. So you, so you talk, I'm on page C4 of your, of your plan here, trying to get a full idea. So at the, at the high side, it looks like you've got some grades that come down, and you've got a catch basin on the, on the corner. And then, if you go past the building, you've got a area where you're infiltrating with, you know, proposed outflow structure and sand filter mix. Above that sand filter mix, is that the area where your vehicle is going to park so you load it?
C2.
On C4.
C2's a little larger version.
It is. Okay. Not, it's not quite to the detail, but. So my question was, is that, that's, is that strip right above your drainage strip, right to the right, right below the building? So you got the building, and then you've got, it looks like a flat rectangle area.
Over here. Right in here.
Yeah. What, what gets my attention is when you're loading, we, we sometimes know that we're not all perfect, and, and materials overspill the edge, and sometimes you can't see them. But then that material would end up in the infiltration area as it rains or does whatever outside. So I'm, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think of, you know, full containment, even when you're loading the area, why, you know, that would be a residual area that, it's right next to the infiltration area that is going into the ground. So, trying to, I'm having a hard time with that one.
Do you want it?
Hi, John Kenny from DuBois and King. The intent there is that, as Kirk mentioned, that's three feet below the grade up in this area. And the idea is that, you know, by having that grade difference, you'll be able to control loading the vehicles at that level. So that would help in that case to minimize any spillage.
I, I get that. But on the low side of that flat area, below that is the drainage area. So any of the material that goes on that flat area, and you would be loading your trucks or whatever in the springtime or whatever, when it rains, that slab would get all washed off and then run into the drainage area, which would kind of be defeating groundwater purpose, wouldn't it?
Well, I think... Well, I think, I think it's more of a housekeeping plan there to keep that clear if there is any spillage to, to, to clean that right up as soon as possible. But, but you're correct, I, you know, that would drain into there, but.
Do you understand what I'm talking about, though? I mean, if, if you back your truck up and you miss, and the stuff ends up on the ground, I mean, it covers over and, and the guy plows and he plows, of course, he's going to plow it into the drainage area. I'm just.
Let me explain it this way. I, I, you know what? You have a valid point. And as a VP of Operations, I've been doing this 30 years. And some guys, like if I ask my buddy, "John, I'm here to load my sander," we would probably have to clean that up, that mess, right? And when I do it, my guys probably say, "We got to clean that up, too." And if you think of it in this terms, right, that, all those roads up there, Vista, Rollingwood, Overlook, Donald Walter, the Ring Roads, all get salted. And I'm going to venture, when they salt those, they probably go through three yards, just one pass. But we're talking about loading in that area. Because of their design, now that we'll have visibility, there will be some misses. Stuff that goes all over the place. But when you look at the three yards on that property every time they salt.
I've got this.
The incidental little bit of salt that we go back and clean up and put back in the pile, I think this design minimizes that. Storage building we, we're going to build, we're going to keep it contained, that long wall that gives us that ability to keep that material up there, doesn't migrate out of there. And anything, usually what happens is the guy goes in, pulls it with the tractor, he comes out, bounces, he drops stuff out there. Most of the stuff that's going to be dropped will be in front of the salt bin, and that gets pushed back in, all undercover. So everything we've done, you know, we followed the DES guidance. We're building this to minimize that. But you're right, there's going to be misses, there's going to be misses. And, you know, when you train a new guy, I had a guy almost roll a tractor over the other day. Right, you have accidents. The best we could do is build something that minimizes it and gives us every opportunity to maximize what we have and keep it where it needs to go.
What about a, what about a bumper or something, just to hold that back a little bit? I mean, a, an asphalt bumper or something on that lowest edge?
You're talking about right here, just like a lip of some kind?
On, on the lowest edge before it goes down into the, into the drainage area. Because the way I'm reading the plan is that drainage area benefits water that comes above the building because the pipe runs across the front of the building and dumps into that area. But, you know, that's.
Yeah. Well, this, this is a sand filter for, for stormwater treatment in this area. And the idea of this design is, is a small area that's up above that'll drain toward, toward the salt shed. Most of it, most, based on the contours, most of it will drain, will miss the whole, whole new facility draining out behind it. But there is a small area up here that drains down toward the salt shed and the, and the hard drive. So we have a swale runs along this side dissipate that water, not from the, from the facility, but up above. So it doesn't drain onto where the salt shed is and. This really is designed to treat stormwater from this, from the roof here and the impervious area here, the gravel area that drain out.
So would that stormwater from the roof land on that area where the, where you're loading?
No, 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 the stormwater, the roof is a shed roof and it drains to the back here. And then there's a swale that runs along here into that sand filter. And then this all, this area would drain, and filter as well. So to meet stormwater requirements, we, we do want to direct all of that impervious area runoff on there to the sand filter for treatment. And then it, then it'll drain off in this area. And as you can see from, area's covered, covered over, but see the area that it drains, drains to. This is where the new salt shed will be. And it, and it'll drain down into a forested area. You know, it kind of drains down in this. So, let's see.
Here's another.
If, if you, as Kirk said, if there's any spillage there, you still want to, I mean, the intent is to treat the stormwater from the impervious area and minimize any kind of salt that does get spilled there, but.
Yeah, I, 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 I see where it all comes around the building, the way you described it, looks good. Again, I says, just on that front area, I mean.
Because even if you had a curb there, you'd still want to.
I'd like to see a curb bumper there to at least contain the area that's an overspill or something. I mean, that's, that's. Oh.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. Kirk? Yeah, absolutely.
Can you get over to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yep, sorry. The existing building is shown here. That's got no real drainage around it. It's got no real controls around it. Down, as John just pointed, it just kind of washes down the hill. And with that, that leakage is just on the ground, unprotected. Really not a great situation. So everything we've done here kind of minimizes that. But as John pointed out, there's opportunity for errors, so.
Thank you. Go on.
Go ahead, Von.
So when you drive into town, or if you're out on the lake, you look up at the hill and you see the white buildings of Sugar Hill. I wonder if any consideration is given to the fact that this is higher up and that maybe it would be better if it blended into the background, you know, a neutral color, not a white, another white object up there in the corner higher?
I believe the salt shed is just going to be built out of framed lumber. I don't believe we're going to vinyl side that. So that will blend in. The current one is just very weather beaten wood, to be honest with you. The maintenance building's already white. We're just going to extend it. I don't think that's going to stick out anymore, but I appreciate the sentiment. And I hadn't really thought about siding the salt shed, to be honest, so I don't think we would do that. I think we would leave it just wood, let it age. It would just appear like a regular structure. And, and to be honest, I don't know that you could see that because there's a ring of trees.
It's, it's really not part of the architectural standard. You know, there's no regulation that says you have to do that. I'm just thinking you might consider not making it white in case it will stick out.
From down the hill, I believe from down the hill, you know, John's maintenance shop is protected by this row of trees here, and then there's a whole bunch of trees here and further there. I, I think most of that's going to be hidden by trees, to be honest with you.
Other questions? Tavis, do you have anything that you want to add?
Not at this time. I do have some recommended conditions later time.
Okay, I entertain a motion to grant the waiver that has been requested.
I'll be happy to make a motion to grant, beg pardon, waiver from the Architectural Design Standards 173 hyphen 19 cap B as requested.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now that the application is considered complete, so I can open the public hearing. Any member of the public that wants to comment on this, now is the time to do that. Okay, don't see any people rushing forward. Tavis, do you have some conditions for us to consider?
Yes, the first refers to the plan set. For those purposes, I will ask that the applicant get me a copy of the elevations that were presented this evening to be part of the file, which ties into condition number three, but I'll get there in a minute. The second condition is applicant responsible for payment of all reporting fees and notice of decision. Three, all documentation is part of the packet. That includes the elevation, so upon receipt, that would be part of the package. And then because there was discussion, I have a recommended number four for additional site directional signage for emergency response routing to maintenance and salt shed to be part of the application.
Okay, so Tavis, the information we were given, winter maintenance and salt minimization plan, that would be included.
Also part of the project, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could we, could we do number five, a bumper? A bumper that you said he was going to put in that area on the low side? No?
I, I don't mind drafting it. It's up to the board if you want to have a fifth condition.
We don't really have anything specified for the bumper, the kind of materials, length, location. It's just an undertaking that.
An asphalt bumper.
Talking about a Cape Cod berm.
Talking about an asphalt bumper like you would see on the edge of a parking lot. Instead of using granite curbing, they just squirted out with asphalt and it's a containment bumper on the edge.
Taylor community be open to either of those, so I prefer just make a generic motion to create a buffer to prevent spillage from leaching down the hill. And then we would put that to an amended site plan to be submitted.
So applicant to include.
A bumper, a buffer.
Oh, wait a minute, does everybody agree with that?
Asphalt or concrete bumper to prevent.
Overspill.
Overspill from getting into infiltration area.
He said that he would consider it.
With the board, so we're trying to make a condition, so.
Right, yes, I understand. Board members, how do you feel about making it a condition?
If John feels it's important and the applicant doesn't think it's a hardship, then there's no reason not to include it as a condition, in my opinion.
The only question I would have, perhaps the answer to this, if you do do a bumper there, you know, a berm, whatever there, are you going to be able to slope your loading area there so that you don't create a ponding issue in there? Otherwise, you're going to be able to have that slope back toward the, part of the, you know, away from the retaining wall. It's in the back, so, okay. That was kind of my concern, that you create a ponding issue there, but if that can slope back.
To answer your question, yeah, there's a pretty significant grading plan that the Boysen King John has created that shows the pitches and all that, and it'll be built to that to make sure that there isn't ponding or water running in the wrong direction.
Right.
And that's something that Taylor will have to manage because over time, when you talk about gravel, you have to maintain that building.
Okay, so Brad, you're in favor of adding the bumper? Yeah, okay, all right. Anyone else? Okay, well, then I would entertain a motion with the five conditions, adding the additional signage. And number five would be adding the bumper.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, the next, next two items are petition warrant articles. These have been submitted by members of the Wolfboro community for us to consider. And so if, and there is an applicant here, I'd like, like that person to speak to these petition articles. If not, the planning board is required to consider the petition warrant articles, hold a planning, a, a public hearing, and then vote whether to accept or not accept these petition articles. And then they would go on to the town warrant. Okay, so the first one is a petition warrant article, petition zoning amendment to amend restaurant carryout to permit drive-through restaurants. Is there anyone here to speak to this? I mean, to, yeah, okay, just a sec. Okay, well, this petition, this provision was added to the zoning ordinance at the end of the 1990s. In 2017 and 2020, this amendment was put on the town warrant and defeated. In 1921, we addressed, the planning board addressed this issue, held a public forum on July 8th. Also, there was a survey monkey was available for the public to respond. During all of that, the, and in compiling this, it was the public participating indicated they did not want drive-through restaurants. So then it was up to the planning board to decide which direction to go. So basically, the planning board then prepared an amendment to the ordinance, which would then strengthen the ordinance so that drive-through restaurants would not be allowed. Tavis, do you want to add to something?
The only thing I was going to add is for the people that may wish to speak to this, is the planning board, as I see it, has already taken a position to be more emphatic in the ordinance, and there's already a warrant article pending for town meeting 22 to make it very clear that drive-through restaurants are not permitted. The planning board, just because they received this petition, does not mean they're necessarily changing their position or taking a different position. Procedurally, as Kathy mentioned, they are required to have a public hearing, regardless of whether this body recommends or doesn't recommend the article, it will be on the warrant at town meeting. So I just want to make that clear for folks.
Okay, so with that having been said, I'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public that wants to speak to this issue, now is the time to do that. Go ahead, Suzanne. Changing the definition of restaurant carryout. A commercial establishment open to the general public, which by design of the physical facilities or by service or packaging procedures permits or encourages the purchase of prepaid, prepared, ready-to-eat foods intended to be consumed either on or off the premises. Restaurant drive-throughs are permitted only on lots with a minimum of one acre and are prohibited on any lot consisting of less than one acre. That, that's the wording that has been proposed by the petitioners.
To be removed.
Excuse me?
It's the wording proposed to be removed.
No, this is the, this is, you asked for the petition article, didn't you? You, you asked for me to read the petition article.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right, thank you.
It's the same language submitted twice before, the same language that had been defeated two to one twice before. Same language that was discussed at the public forum and defeated, I forget exactly what it was, 70 people in the room, one person voted for it, the rest voted against it. And the survey monkey, if I remember, was over 300 votes against and a small fraction votes in favor. So this language has been repudiated numerous times before by the voters of the town.
Okay, any other member of the public want to speak to the issue? Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. And planning board members, any questions or comments or what are your thoughts?
I just wanted to clarify that the, the survey and the forum were not in 1921, they were last year, 2021.
I don't think I was born in 1921.
Well, Kathy said 1921. I think it was just a slip.
I'd, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to suggest that the planning board not recommend this warrant article to the public for a positive vote.
Wait a minute.
I'll second that.
I think we would be contradicting our former behavior if we recommended this.
Right, I was just questioning the, say that again, Mike.
I don't think I probably could say it exactly that way.
Okay, all right.
I, I, I suggest the planning board not recommend this to the voters.
Okay, would you make a motion to?
So moved.
Thank you very much. And Peter, that was a second.
Second.
Oh, okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, one abstention. Okay, thank you. Okay, one abstention, okay, thank you. Okay. The next one is a petition warrant article. This is a, to amend the accessory building structure to remove the ground floor half-bath restriction. Okay. This. This one basically. Takes away what we approved in 2021. But let me just go through the history. In 2009, based on a suggestion from the ZBA, they asked the planning board to somehow or other clarify what is allowed in accessory buildings and what is not. And the concern of ZBA at that time was that an applicant had come to them, had a garage that was quite a distance from the main house, and he simply wanted to put a bathroom in. And he agreed at the time that it would be a half-bath, which is either a toilet and a sink or a toilet and a shower. So that was what the ZBA felt, I think they granted it, but they felt that that was something that should be considered in the zoning ordinance. So in 2009, we took out of the regulations bunkhouses and guest cottages and added to the habitable space definition. Now, the reason that this is important is because the town, for quite a few years, has been concerned about all of the accessory buildings being turned into living space. And so that's the issue that they were trying to deal with. So when they amended the habitable space in 2009, they added bathrooms and toilet rooms, among others are not considered habitable space. Then we moved along until 2020, and it came up again by the planner, and he suggested that we add to habitable space, toilet rooms on the first floor only are not considered habitable space. Then in '21, the issue came up again. This time, we had a new code officer, and so we went over it with him, and we decided to ask the voters to consider an accessory building or structures shall be limited to a single half-bath. So that's kind of the history, and we were simply just trying to make sure that if somebody put a toilet in an accessory structure, it was just a half-bath and which considered the toilet and sink or shower. And so this amendment now brings forward back the amendment as it stood before we added the, this to the definition. And Tavis, do you want to just speak to the, this issue?
The issue has posed a practical difficulty on the implementation side. I will, I mean, of the 1,100 permits issued last year, probably 12 or 13 of them dealt with accessory structures. The first one that came to my attention was a rather large pool house that was being built, and the owner of the would-be pool house was very confused as to why they wouldn't be allowed to put a bathroom in their pool house. It clearly was not a structure that can be converted to a residential unit by any stretch of the imagination, but by having this in the definition, they had to come up with a workaround, I'll say. There are people that are building tunnels between accessory buildings and their primary residence so that they can condition the space so that it's no longer an accessory structure, so that they can have a full bathroom. I understand the intent, perhaps of the zoning board and perhaps of the planning board, to want to discourage at all costs additional dwelling units from being created, but there are, I will say, a number of unintended consequences of this language being in this definition. One of them chiefly is, what is the ground?
So you're in favor of this?
I'm just letting you know what I've heard from the practical side, I don't think it's appropriate for me to take a position on the amendment.
All right.
Or the petition. Not having a definition of ground floor sometimes poses a quandary. I know what the intent of this is, I know what the origin is. Just for the public, Kathy and I have gone round and round on this a number of times. We intended it to do this, but there are some unintended consequences. I guess a question for the board to consider is, it's appropriate, I mean, given where this all began, is it appropriate for someone that wants to put a bathroom in a pool house to have to get a variance? The other thing I would offer is, since all of this started, particularly in 2017, when the state codified what an accessory dwelling unit is, and the town adopted all of the regulations about accessory dwelling units, I think it's fair to say that the regulations are very emphatic, that no detached accessory dwelling units are permitted. So if someone is going to do an illegal conversion, they're going to do an illegal conversion regardless of what this definition says. And that is another area that has come up recently. There was a short time this year when I was the acting building inspector for very simple things, and there were times when I had to call the question, you said it was a half-bath, but jeepers, there seems to be extra plumbing. It was never hooked up, but it was clear what the intention was going to be. That's not a reason to not issue a certificate of occupation or a certificate of completion for that project. The people are still going to do it. So personally, I've seen this particular sentence creating more.
You've spoken to the issue.
So Kathy?
Yes.
Can I take a pass at this? For years, the planning department was not allowing any bathrooms in accessory buildings, including garages. And we had a lot of people coming forward saying, this is a garage, this is a workshop, it's unreasonable that we have to track all the way to the house. So we thought, in order to kind of perfect things and not allow real, you know, habitable bathrooms, a shower, a sink, a toilet, we would allow half baths so that you could have your workshop or your garage and have a half bath in your pool house, whatever those real accessory uses are, without confusing the idea that it would be habitable. I'm curious about the definition of half bath. I never heard the shower and the half bath before.
Never did either.
That's another issue that's come up, that people say.
Well, we can, we can deal with that this year.
But it does say swimming pools, tennis courts, like, you know, outdoor residential spots, it needs to be, facilities, you know, those things are exempt, so therefore, you know, many of the pool issues that you're talking about are exempt.
The pool, not the pool house.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I'd like to take it back a little bit further back, because I remember in the day when you were only limited to one accessory structure per lot. And then we took that off the list, and we allowed people to have more than one accessory structure on their lot, and then I can confirm what Vaughn said, it was Paul Montreux who brought the idea up to us that said, I should have my bathroom in my garage so I don't have to go to my house. And I think, listening to everybody talk here, if you're not out in the field and you have a client that you're working for, and you know they're gonna tear the house down, and then all of a sudden, you go to their garage and you go upstairs and they've put the half bath, the bathroom in, and now they've taken the whole kitchen out of their other house, and they're gonna put it in the garage, and they're gonna rebuild the brand-new house, you, you just shake your head and you have to turn around and leave. And then when the building inspector comes to us last year and says, geez, I have no real power to go upstairs and look at their upstairs because I have no legal right to do that, we also had that consideration brought to us by the building inspectors. But Tavis does make a good point of whether or not we should see additional plumbing fixtures and so forth in a half bath, so maybe we should be looking at that also. I don't support this, but I can sympathize for the people who wanna, who wanna build a tunnel to the house, I have no problem with that.
I question whether or not this accomplishes what it intends. If we go back and remove the half bath language, no bath is allowed, because that's why we added it. So if we scratch the half bath, I would think we'd be back to where we started.
I don't believe International Building Code or IRC considers a bathroom habitable space, so even the addition of a bathroom would not be adding habitable space.
Okay, so that's a difference in enforcement today versus enforcement in the past.
Correct.
Okay, but in our existing definition of habitable space, it says closets, hallways, storage, toilet rooms are not considered habitable space. So anyway, that's somewhat of a conflict. Okay, let me open the public hearing. Does anyone want to weigh in on this issue?
Good evening, my name is Rick Eaton. I'm the gentleman that actually has filed this petition. I'm a general contractor here in Wolfboro, and I've dealt with several customers over the years that have run up against this situation where they want to add a ba-, or have a bathroom in a building that's not attached to their house. They're being limited as to what they can put in as far as a bathroom is concerned. We've got a customer that we just recently built a workshop for, and he would like to have a full bath in his workshop, so he can jump in the shower or whatever, have a toilet, wash his hands, and this current law prevents him from having that. I'd like to know what, really, and you've done a pretty good job of explaining, but I'd like to know what the intent of this law by putting this restriction is on a homeowner to have a bathroom. And, and if you're trying to prevent people from having multiple dwelling units, habitable dwelling units, then I think maybe there should be some sort of language that addresses just that, and not have this large umbrella that covers everybody, whether it's a pool house, workshop. You know, I think it should be more specific as to what it is you're trying to prevent and what you're allowing. Right now, it's just saying, no, nobody can have a full bath in a, in an accessory building. If you want to add a garage to your house, it's attached, conditioned space, enclosed breezeway that's heated or whatever, you can have that bathroom. So if you want to put a bathroom on the second floor of a garage, as long as it's attached, from what I understand, it's allowed use. What difference does it make if that bathroom is in that garage on the second floor, with or without a breezeway? So the language, I think it needs to be cleaned up, and I think it needs to be more specific towards what it is you're trying to do to go after, not go after, but to limit it to, you know, multiple dwelling units versus just saying to everybody, no, if it's an accessory building, you can't have, you can't have a full bathroom. And I'd also like to have a legal definition of a half bath. Somebody could provide that to me, appreciate that, I'd like to see that and know what it is in writing, what a legal half bath is. My knowledge, it doesn't exist.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you.
Kathy, I have a question. And if you put a full bath above an attached garage.
Yep.
That is still one dwelling unit. Is that right?
Correct, that's my understanding, yep.
If I end up having a garage over here, which is not attached, and I am now allowed to put in a full bath, and maybe it's a two-story, then all of a sudden, that becomes a possible dwelling unit, and that may become a dwelling unit outside of the initial application. So how does what you're wanting affect that particular issue?
Well, that's, I guess, has something, some sort of language would have to be put in place to address that. If you're saying, as a board, you don't want to have somebody having multiple dwelling units on a piece of property, then you need to address that, not just to say you can't have a full bath. If you've got a workshop over here that's, you know, 1,000 feet away from your home, you can't have a full bath, just because we're trying to prevent multiple dwelling units. So that person's being penalized for something that's, that's beyond the realm of what it is you're trying to do. You're saying, we don't want multiple dwelling units in Wolfboro, okay? That's fine. But don't penalize the guy that wants to have a full bath in his workshop, or the guy that wants to have a bathroom in his, in his pool house, because you don't want to have multiple dwelling units. There are people that legitimately just, they want a full bathroom, they should be allowed to have it. If, if the septic system is designed to handle it, and they meet all the, all the requirements, from that aspect, from the state perspective of what's allowed, they should be allowed to have it, and they shouldn't be penalized because you don't want to have multiple dwelling units. This customer I'm talking about, he has no intentions of renting it out or turning it into an Airbnb, he just wants, it's a, it's a good hike from his house to his workshop, he just wants to have a full bathroom. He should be allowed to have it.
So what's your, what's your definition of a full bathroom?
I, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I'm not.
No, as a contractor.
What would I consider a full bathroom?
Yeah, you're advocating for a full bath, what do you consider that?
A vanity, a toilet, and a shower, or tub shower unit.
So from what I'm hearing, we just hear testimony that we've been allowing a shower and a toilet, what are we missing?
Vanity.
So if we don't, so we're, so this is over a vanity?
Basically.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify, that's all.
It's not over, it's not over a vanity, it's over a full bath versus what we believe to be a half bath, which is not a full bath. If we can easily define what a full bath is, a toilet, a sink to wash your hands in, and a shower to take a shower in, if that's a full bath, then a half bath is something less than that. Take away the shower, take away the toilet, take away the vanity, but it's, it's something that doesn't have all three of them.
Is it a three-quarter bath, or is it a half bath?
I think generally speaking, a vanity, a toilet, a shower is a three-quarter, if it's a tub, it's then a full.
I think what's, what I hear now is a lot of arguing about what is this, what is that, no one really has a firm feeling for what is this and what is that.
Correct.
So I've got a suggestion for the board to consider, preamble to it, we worked hard on this issue in 2020, we held public hearings on it, public listened, we put this before the voters, the voters approved the change in language, gotta say that the town, at the time, was behind it, no one got up at public hearing and said, oh my God, this is terrible, you can't do it, so we went ahead and we did it. Now we're hearing that there might be some pushback from some people in the, in the town. My suggestion, Mike, is as follows, retain the language, do not recommend this now, institute a work session to decide, one, what is a half bath, and two, what would be the consequences of allowing a full bath in an accessory building, as per Mr. Eaton's suggestion. as per Mr. Eaton's suggestion? Look at the example of other towns in the state that may allow that, and see what has happened. Are they inundated all of a sudden with people turning accessory structures with full baths into Airbnbs, or a second home on a single-family lot, or whatever? And if there appears to be, and other people's experience, no real detrimental effect, maybe we can go ahead and accommodate. If there does, maybe we shouldn't.
Right. I agree with you, Mike, and I was going to mention that also. I really think that what we need to do is hold back on this amendment and really, in 2022, re-study the issue. Make sure that habitable space and accessory dwelling and all of the things are saying the same thing, and define half-bath if it's necessary, and then hold a public hearing and see how people feel about that. But so I agree with Mike's suggestion. Any other thoughts on this?
Well, I think back to the original position of we're allowing somebody to have something. We're allowed them to have a toilet in your garage. Before, you couldn't. So we're not restricting, we actually allowed. And you always know, when you give something, it sometimes isn't enough, and you wanna take it further. And I think what we do know is that we aren't allowed in somebody's house after we leave and inspect it, and anything can happen there. And we don't know if somebody builds a facility above a garage, whether or not their septic can handle it, or if it's on-town septic, or if it's next to the lake and their septic is 40 years old, and they just added to it. So in that fashion, I think we have a gray area where I don't think we can take a chance.
Okay, go ahead, Peter.
I am going to be very sympathetic in many ways to what you're stating, as in, your particular clients are people who are not going to abuse this particular regulation.
Right.
And the issue then becomes the people who are not gonna be as good as your clients are, and they are gonna abuse it. And so therefore, we do need to look at this issue in the long term, you know, as work sessions, because, you know, we, in many ways, would like to have the people who are doing the right thing be able to do it.
Yep.
But we also wanna make sure that the people who are gonna abuse it don't.
Well, if, yeah, and I can appreciate that, but when you talk about the people that are gonna abuse it, like Tavis said, they're the ones that, they're gonna put the plumbing in, they're not gonna install the fixtures. Code officer goes away, you know what's gonna happen. So you're really not stopping the ones that are abusing it. Maybe you might get, you know, a few people that might think twice about it, but the ones that want a bathroom are gonna put a bathroom. It's gonna happen, and I've seen it happen for the ones.
Well, the law depends upon public accommodation with its requirements. That's the only way it works. Otherwise, you'd have to have a cop inside everybody's house, running inspections every hour.
Yep.
So you can't control for the bad apples. You write regulations for the people who will respect the law.
Okay, all right.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, just a sec. All set, then?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. So go ahead, Suzanne.
So as I read this, if I read this correctly, if we take out the allowance for a half-bath, that means no more half-baths, right? As Vaughn said--
So I think as a board, we have to discuss the change of perception of what the regulation says, because we added the half-bath when that method was being upheld, that they were not allowed at all. But if there's a new interpretation where they're allowed, we need to modify our language somewhere, or our understanding, so that we're making regulations that are enforceable by the code officer. So I think we have to review this.
Well, I follow the sequence. I was around when that happened. But the way this is written, what you're addressing tonight, will be taking out that allowance of a half-bath. Is that correct?
If it passes.
Yeah, if it passes, right.
Okay.
Well--
What?
I don't think the board is taking a position as to whether the allowance for a bathroom goes away. What we're saying is, by definition, an accessory structure may only have a half-bath on the ground floor. After it passed, one of the first contractor questions I received was, how many full baths can I put on the second floor? I don't mean to be sarcastic, but there was some general confusion about the allowance that this language was granting them, as the board views it.
So what you're saying, excuse me, Suzanne, what you're saying then, Tavis, is we have language which has resulted in some confusion in the minds of the public?
Correct. And the general explanation is, the board is further attempting to preclude multiple residences on a property.
That was the intention of the language. We've heard testimony from the guy who presented this application for a petition warrant article, that it is having a negative effect on his business in some cases. Gotta say, in that case, and the ordinance has been effective. It is stopping what it was written to be intended to stop. And I would be very cautious to recommend this to the public.
Okay, could we let Suzanne finish, or--
I understand all that, but what I want to get at is, exactly what will this do if it is passed? And I read it to say, I would interpret it. Never mind the accessory building and the history and all that. If this is passed, it seems as though there'd be no allowance for a half-bath in an accessory building going forward.
No, it says nothing about any bathrooms. In other words, you could have none, or you could have a whole, you could have a full bath.
As long as you have no habitable space.
This specifically talks about a half-bath.
Well, our zoning is permissive, so we really say what's allowed. By taking out what's allowed, you're saying it's not allowed anymore.
But this isn't, this is a definition. This isn't, this isn't like you're allowed to park and sell cars, or you're allowed to have an office building. That's where the permissive comes in. The definition of accessory just means it's accessory to the primary use of the property.
But then, don't you refer back to your definition?
And that's--
Which would be saying it's not allowed.
One of the, well, no, because many communities don't state in an accessory building what you can use that accessory building for. They regulate the size of an accessory building, sometimes as a ratio to the primary structure or primary use. You know, back to John's question earlier, how much salt can you store? Well, obviously, if you have a 1,000-square-foot home and you propose a 30,000-square-foot salt storage, that's really not incidental and subordinate to the 1,000-square-foot residential use. But perhaps if you have 10 acres in a very large home, you might have a barn.
So what are you suggesting?
I'm just having a hard time with understanding, if this is voted yes, what would happen?
From a practical standpoint, there would be no regulation of where in an accessory building a bathroom was located.
Right.
That helps. But then let me ask--
And it could be a full bath.
Okay, that helps--
Right.
--me understand this, which, good luck to the voters. But the next question would be, if this passes, then bathrooms are allowed. They would have to go get a building permit, correct? The building inspector would then check to see if their septic system is adequate, correct? So that's the controlling instrument of whether or not a person would get a bathroom.
Bathrooms are based on bedrooms.
Yeah, this is gonna--
I mean, septic is based on bedrooms.
Yeah.
Well, but he's gonna look, if it's a four-bedroom house and the septic is approved for three bedrooms, certainly not gonna authorize one more in an accessory building.
Well, they can't have a bedroom in the accessory building.
I understand that.
No, I see where you're going.
There's a limit, there's a limit. That septic system is gonna dictate the limit of how much more expansion can happen.
Correct.
Whether it be a half-bath, a full bath, accessory building, or in their house.
Correct. But keep in mind, if you had a four-bedroom house and a four-bedroom septic, you could have 65 bathrooms in your house, or you could have two. The septic system doesn't have to change unless you add bedrooms. So one of the controlling things is, if you already have a four-bedroom septic, you're also gonna get in trouble with the state if you add a bedroom in the accessory building.
Well, you're getting into the nitty-gritty, but essentially, the septic system is gonna play a role in whether it be the state, or whether it be the town, or whether it be the building inspector, but there is some safety--
Yes.
--in regards with the septic, unless it's a real old one like mine, and then I can't prove whether it is a residence. Anyway, okay. I don't know if I'm more confused or less confused, but good luck.
Happy to meet later, if you'd like.
I mean, this is the wording that was presented to us, so this is the wording that we need to go with.
Yeah.
And we can't change anything.
I know, you have to deal with the black and white in front of you--
Yes.
--to recommend it or not.
Okay, thank you. Any other member? Okay.
Brian Stanley, how you doing? I just wanted to make a point. John had a very valid point when he said, clients, customers, homeowners, all want everything they can get, all the time. It happens to us where they go between, between you and them, and we have to try and make this whole thing work. Is it fair for one homeowner that has a flat lot with an attached two-car garage, that puts a bonus room above and puts a full bathroom, and maybe even sleeping quarters up there, and his neighbor has a house that's on a hill, and the lay of the land dictates that he cannot have the attached garage by base of square footage, and the garage has to be located remotely, but wants to put a bathroom, even if it were a bedroom over there detached? Are his rights violated? Because if he's got a septic that will handle all of that, is he getting punished because his building isn't attached due to the lay of the land? It's just something to think about.
That's grounds for variance, then, because the land--
Grounds for variance. So that's how you would approach that. But we do know that everybody always wants, I mean, the bathroom in the garage, this has been an ongoing fight for 20 years, maybe more, I don't know. I've been here, I've been in these meetings long ago, where everybody wants the same thing. I would want one. But I own two houses, I don't have an Airbnb, I think that's the concern of the town? Is that what you're trying to fend off, is people--
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? So that's what, I was listening to you, and I get your point on, what is the sole purpose of not allowing a bathroom up in the second floor of a garage? For renting it out?
No, it's really to prevent having two dwelling units on one lot.
Yep. But our neighbors in Tuftonboro, that's allowed.
It's a different town.
Yeah. But is there a problem up there that's caused by that, do you feel?
Well, I don't think that, I don't, I mean, I hear what Vaughn said. I don't think she intended to mean that adding a bathroom on the second floor of a detached structure equals another dwelling unit.
Right.
It primes the pump in those that don't follow the other rules.
Yeah. I'm just curious, asking for what's driving this whole thing. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other member of the public? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And planning board, how do you wanna proceed with this?
I have one comment, and that is, we're not going to find a law that says what a half-bathroom is, and so we'll have to put it in our ordinance somewhere. And convention is that it's a toilet and a sink. It's not a toilet and a shower, you know? But we'd have to write that out, because it's just a matter of convention, and there is no law that says this is a half-bath--
Right.
--as far as I know.
No, we can point to common practice. We can point to the Planner's Dictionary definition of a half-bath, if there is one, and on and on.
Or we could add the language.
And we just craft language for our own 175, 175. I'd be happy to make a motion not to recommend this to the warrant.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay.
I'd also be happy to make a motion that this board consider placing on the work session. One, consideration of crafting a definition of what a half-bath might be. And, two, the ramifications of allowing a full bath in an accessory structure based upon other experiences from other towns.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this item will go on next year's work program, well, this year's work program.
Yep.
And so, and then, once we, the planning board has a discussion about this, comes up with a proposal, then we'll hold a public hearing. So anyway, thank you very much for your comments. Okay. Yeah, no, I was just gonna mention this. I received a letter from Doug Braskin, and he's interested in serving as an alternate on the Wolfboro Planning Board, and I think probably it might be good if we have him speak to us.
Yep.
Is that okay? Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm Doug Braskin, and yes, I sent the letter. I hope that it's been shared with the rest of the board here. I'm bought a house in Wolfboro in 2016. Now, I moved up here full-time in 2019. We intend to retire here, and I wanna be part of the town. I feel that this is a good way for me to do it. I have some background in construction. I'm interested in seeing how the town develops, and making sure that it serves the people of the town. I know that sometimes that's a very contentious issue, since people have different views, both in this town and in the country, as to what's best for their own living arrangements. So I'd just like to give something back to the town, and I see this as a way for me to do it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you folks have any questions you wanna ask? Okay, well, we appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
And we do have room for one more, or two more alternates.
Absolutely.
Yeah, right. Okay, so how would the board, oh, go ahead, John.
I just want to see how that process, obviously, we respect Julie, 'cause she's been here first. Would we alternate on applications?
Yes. Yeah, that's, yes, we would. So that's how--
And there were instances a couple of meetings ago where, I believe, two members had to recuse, in which case, two alternates would have been helpful.
Right. Yes. Okay. You wanna put this off, or do you wanna vote now?
I'd be happy--
Happy to vote.
I'm sorry?
I'm happy to vote. I move that we accept--
A point.
What?
Move to a point.
Oh, move to a point, sorry. I've forgotten your name.
Doug--
Doug Braskin as an alternate to the planning board. It's not written in front of me, so--
Seconded.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to accept Doug Braskin as an alternate. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, great. So the next meeting is, what's the date of the next meeting?
Like, the 18th.
18th. See you then.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, right. Okay, let's see. The next item is the, okay, opportunity for public comment. Any member of the public want to make any type of request or statement?
Got them.
Okay. No one wants to speak to us, I guess?
Oh.
And so, okay, so-- Okay, so I'm not sure if you-- Okay, so I'm not sure if you folks want to deal with this tonight, or put it off.
Let's do it next time.
What was that?
That's what we said the last time.
Yes, we did say that.
Yeah, we already put off the minutes of November 16 once. Can we get through them quickly? You want a motion to approve?
If people are ready.
I'd just like to say that we shouldn't probably be overly critical. I mean, I sound in here like English is spoken as a second language, but I hesitate to go through and correct every little detail, unless something of substance.
That's exactly how I felt, Vaughn. There were too many changes to bring it up to speed.
Yeah.
I simply accept it as presented. It did cover, I thought, what we did that day.
Okay, you're talking about the November 16.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And it'll also go for the December 7 meeting.
Yeah. You know, given that we didn't have that. Okay, so, Mike, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of November 16, 2021, as presented.
Okay, all right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve November 16 minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, and then we have the December 7 minutes.
I would suggest that the December 7 minutes that were presented in the packet had issues, and we should look at those at a later date.
What issues did you find?
Well, the one I had in my packet had page 1, page 3, page 5, page 7, page 9.
Oh, okay.
In case you...
Okay, so...
There was a full set available online.
There was, but what was in the packet was not there, and I did not look at it.
Okay, so, so what, we've all got, yeah, I mean, I think you have them, right, Peter, but...
I now have them, yes, I do.
Want to move them to the next meeting?
Yeah. Why don't we just, why don't we put that on the next agenda, okay, Tavis?
December 7 is going to...
Yeah, right.
And I have a request for our new secretary, and I'm sorry, I don't think anybody said who they were, has requested. Is that like in the November 16 minutes, every time somebody new is speaking? That could be a new paragraph? Hard to follow? Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll put this one off until next meeting. Anything else anyone wants to bring up? Tavis, do you have any applications pending?
I do not believe so.
All right, great. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.